Hello there, everybody. I am Ken Fallsgraph. I sit on a school board in a small rural district in North Los Angeles County, California. Welcome to this set of campaign videos that I call School Board Insider. It is a campaign effort for the 2022 general election. Now, before we get going here, if you haven't seen the other videos prior to this one in this playlist or in this series, you're going to want to stop here and click on that eye that's popping up right there, and it will take you to the beginning where we talk about the average things that a school board member deals with, or someone who is thinking about running for school board but has no, per se, governance experience, especially with school districts, can kind of look to and see a no-holds-bar, cut right to the bone, rip the Band-Aid off, look at some of the things you can counter. Now, the other episodes have been about things like governance and what happens in closed session and how things can get out of control there, the relationships boards have with superintendents, staff of the school district, the public, and then it gets into some things that you're likely to encounter when people feel the need to run a governance structure outside of the board, and I called that one Underground School Board. So yeah, this stuff is sometimes shocking. If it's five years from now and we're way past 2022 and you're watching this, this may come in handy. I am in my guitar shop, that's what's going on here, and I build guitars out of junk, different things, and redo old, cheap guitars, like the Econo Arch Top guitars you would buy in a mail-order catalog in the 1940s through the 1960s. That's what I do here. It's a good hobby for me. I'm coming home from a long week of work in the public sector position. I hold him a public sector employee. What we'll do here is very seldom do my worlds cross the guitar world and the political world, but this time they will. You see this guitar behind me here? I got a story to tell about this guitar that you will not believe, and it goes back to me filing, excuse me, my papers with the county register of voters the day I did that. There's an interesting story here. Anyway, moving along, let's do a little disclaimer. I am Ken. I'm one school board member. I don't speak for the other school board members. This is not a forum to set policy or discuss policy or anything like that. I don't want to hear that I'm great, or I'm not great, or somebody else is or isn't, or I should do this, or maybe I think I should talk you into doing that. The comments are disabled below. Again, this is only my opinion, and if you're watching this in the future, I hope it proves useful to you. Now, what happened is after I filed my papers and the deadline came for everybody to file their papers, there were not enough candidates to actually conduct an election, so the election was canceled. So therefore, come after the election and the first board meeting in December, I will be re-seeded in a position I hold on the board that I've held for six years. I'm an incumbent. There will be another board member who is serving on the board as an appointee, who will, by default of no election, fill that position for many two years, and then are new, two new people coming onto the board in December. So our board structure is already set up, and we're ready to roll. So the bottom line on this video is I am going to, once that loud truck goes by, that's Acton, California, that's the measure of wealth, how big and loud your truck is. Anyway, the reason I'm discussing this tonight is it kind of amuses me through the political season, through the campaign season, and at the very end, when you're about ready to go into the ballot box, some of the tactics that people will use, and I'm going to cover those in this video, that I've called Munchausen Politics. Okay, some of you have heard this word before, munchausen by proxy, munchausen by internet, and what it signifies is basically someone who creates an illusion that they're sick or a baby is sick, and by creating this illusion, there's a problem. Generally, I cause the problem if I'm the one doing this, and then I somehow fix the problem, which makes me a hero in the end when there really was no problem to begin with. And we're going to talk about exactly what that means in terms of politics and what you can see when things get closer and closer to everybody going in the ballot box. Now, some people don't realize that mail-in ballots are becoming very popular, and so if you're waiting till the very end to the rush of people to the ballot box, you may be missing the opportunity to get your message out early. So let's talk about messaging. Most people have a platform. Let's talk about my platform. When I started and decided I was going to run for the school board, I'd been in the meetings for like five years, so I pretty much understood what was going on, if there were any issues I had with the district in terms of with my children or other things. I made sure they're out of the way. You don't get on the school board to fix something for your child. I did a little tongue-in-cheek video during my campaign of 2008. There was actually a local reporter that interviewed me, and I talked in this video about what it takes to make a good school board member, in my opinion, and I'm going to give you a link to that up there. Watch it if you like. It's kind of funny. There's some Ken in there, but in all seriousness, if you're going to run for school board, you have to understand your place. You don't tell anybody what to do. You don't run the superintendent, per se, and give staff direction. If you start getting into that world, again, watch the series about School Board Insider, about staff and superintendent interactions, but you're basically saying, I can serve the community. I think I have a skill set that would help. I'm joining something, not taking over something, and I can build consensus, meaning if I think something is good, the superintendent's office and the staff are probably likely supportive, it's good for kids, and then I can get two other board members to reason with me and say, yeah, I'll support that. But if you're representing yourself as a change agent and everything is wrong, you'll never build consensus. You'll never really be effective in moving that skill set that you have forward to be of service to the kids of the district. That's what this is really all about. Some people miss that. So I've covered this before in other episodes. Whatever your platform is, make it known. For example, when I ran for school board, this district was highly dependent on revenue from out-of-bound charter schools, revenue as a source, so we're going to take a percentage of funding from over here and use it as a local funding source. So if you know anything about school budgets and things like that, you'll know what that means. Schools are funded by, basically, you get a few grants, federal and state grants every once in a while, but it's mainly how many kids you keep in a seat on the average on any day of the school year. So if your enrollment is going down, your funding is going down, it gets into a certain point that you're not able to maintain and pay your current debt obligations and for those couple of years out, and then in California, they call that negative certification, and they assign you a fiscal advisor, and it turns into a mess. When your enrollment drops, your ability to fund things beyond the rudimentary programs, math, English, those types of things, fall out, and then you're not a good educational venue, because educational venues are increasingly becoming about choice and competition, even though it's a public thing. And so when your funding drops out, the arts go out the window, enrichments, career technical programs, and then things can roll out in the region where you're just not to be messed with. So my platform was this. I knew as a public sector employee, tax rate structures are built on actualities, like it costs this much to staff the people that supply your water, pick up your trash, keep your lights on, and there's generation costs, there's trucks, there's equipment, there's all this kind of thing, but taxation is not supposed to be built-to-built in a profit margin that somebody can bonus themselves or take something from here, these people, taxpayers over here, and move it over here. Anybody knows that, so the funding model this district was using was going to collapse by court order. I knew that, anyone could see that coming. So my platform was this: reduce fiscal dependence on out-of-bound chartered, basically, before the court makes you do that, and the wake-up call comes and suddenly your bank account is empty. So glide path into that. Next was restore focus on local students, because if you don't do that, you're kind of worried about what's out here, and then your local students are kind of left with the rudimentary stuff like I was talking about. And finally, restore the good name of the district and the greater educational marketplace. Back then, everybody was suing the district. People didn't want anything to do with it, and when you got that kind of reputation, your ability to have colleges come in and offer your high school students college-level classes and credits while they're still in high school, career tech people, those kind of people are like, you know what, I, yeah, I'm not sure about that. I don't want to alienate myself from the bigger market where that stuff isn't going on. So as a candidate, I look back and I see those things are happening. We've got some signature programs. We have arrangements with colleges. We have trade unions coming in and doing training on our campuses. A lot of signature programs going on, and so our enrollment is going up. We'll get into, you know, some of the dirty politics that are going on about that, but along the way, again, if you're a candidate, you want to make sure people know what you're running for, make it really clear. You don't have to trash everything, but at the same time, say what the problem is and say what your commitment is to fix it. That way, people can follow it. A lot of people vote by mail, they get the ballot, they read your statement, and they're not waiting out in, you know, the coffee shop to hear the bad things about you. Make yourself measurable, so when you look back on years of service and you're thinking about running, again, look the community in the eye and say, yeah, I did this. Or sometimes things don't work out for you when you're naive, you're new, you go, I've said a million times, you go back in your first closed session and you go, oh, I didn't know all this, and I've been kind of getting out ahead on my leash, and somebody's going to yank me back in. But at the end of the day, it's about being honest and knowing your platform. Now, I've seen a lot of things that were outside of that, and I got a couple of good stories for you when it comes to how people can be one way when they're campaigning and completely different after they're in. Okay, in 2018, I served on the board for two years, and so there were a lot of candidates that election cycle. I got a call from one of them who wanted to meet me at a coffee shop, and I'm going to keep the details generic, so yeah, this isn't about bashing anybody, but it's just what you could run into. Now, I will say that sometimes people form a group or a slate where I say, I'm aligned with this person, who's this? We're going to come in as a group and hopefully be elected as a group because we want to accomplish this. Make that known. Okay, that's something completely different than meeting me in a coffee shop and saying to me, especially after you've been animistic towards me out on the street and kind of padding the agenda of someone else who, my basic platform that I was telling you about, about the charter schools and the funding and all that was fine in the face of that, so you've been openly animistic towards me, and then you want to meet me in a coffee shop, and when I get there, you say this to me, you know, it's not you that I'm after, it's not you that I have a problem with, it's that other person on the board. So think about that. There's a fine line between setting up a slate of candidates and collusion. So I'm not sure that the, in California, there's the district attorney has an Office of Public Integrity. I'm not sure that they would be jumping up and down to know that there were candidates colluding like this and doing this. And I certainly took offense to it, even given the source to begin with, but I looked at the person and thought, okay, you haven't served on a school board, you really don't know, you know, the ins and outs of governance and the structure of the law and what the role is, but you're so presumptuous that you think you're automatically going to get elected, and you're going to use me to eliminate this candidate, like I really believe that, right? How do I know you're not going to the other candidate and doing the same thing? So here's what I'll tell you. If you are pulling that kind of stuff behind the scenes, and that's your face behind the scenes, I don't know what your public face is going to be when the business becomes about taking care of kids. Now, what I told the person, based on our past history, and I'm not shy, I said, look, you and I are enemies of a biblical nature, like snakes and sheep, and I'm not going to get my fur dirty on you. Well, to this day, I'm not, we're not tight with each other, to say the least, but the point of the matter is, if you're doing coffee shop meetings and colluding against other people, I'm not sure that people in the public don't see that, and it's no surprise in a community where you're getting 3,600, 4,000 votes maximum, that you lose by hundreds of votes. That's a big margin, and you got to kind of look in the mirror when that happens to you. So there's story number one. Okay, here's story number two. This one's a doozy. Candidate for office that I'm a candidate for, and this concerns comments to a superintendent. Now, you want to remember the relationship between a superintendent and the school board. If it gets odd, the superintendent can feel like I'm not stable, my focus is not about on the kids and all that. It's more about making sure that I have three votes at least to move my programs forward, and if it starts getting political on the board and that becomes the focus, superintendents have a choice. I can either move on, or I can kind of fight this, and the easy way to fight that is to kind of a system that has a mono president, the same person's president every year. In those systems, the superintendent kind of looks at life like, as long as I make that person happy who does the agenda review and kind of acts as a secretary and informs the rest of the board, I'm good to go. I keep one person happy instead of thinking about the consensus, and that's an unfortunate thing. Anyway, so superintendents know they're fragile when it comes to boards unless the board is solid and the governance structure is trained and knows what's important, and people respect each other and don't become onerous of their seat just for some popularity contest in the community. So anyway, this person goes to the superintendent, not our current superintendent, and says, hey, it's election season. If you hear some things, don't take it personally. It's just part of campaigning. Okay, think about that. So whether you're playing with my head in a coffee shop, or you're saying like something like that to the superintendent, realize that the superintendent is employed, and you're kind of in a roundabout way, maybe not exactly threatening the superintendent, but you're basically saying, look, I'm going to bash you in the public, but yeah, don't worry about it. That's what we do in campaigning. So do you turn into somebody else after you get seated? Of course, the person didn't get seated doesn't surprise me at all. Again, the community isn't sometimes as silly as you think they are when you put on the smiley face and glad I had people one minute and then collude in the background, but when you say things like that to a public sector employee, you're walking a dangerous line, especially if perceived as a threat. Anyway, so election, things get heated. I happen to be sitting at, I took a morning off of work, sat at a commencement ceremony that was about to start, and I'm on the phone with somebody in a Bluetooth, and this person comes in and leans into me and gives me a look that would scare Cruella De Vil and says, you talk too much, and then whips around, waddles away, and does the hair thing. And of course, this person's a privileged associate to the same person that's kind of making his hints towards the superintendent, and the person that was in my ear said, what was that, Fallsgraph? You seem to be really popular up there. And I said, yeah, I guess I'm too loud with the truth, is what happened. So yeah, if you're going to get into school board politics, yeah, it gets messy in your town, and you know, if your business is there, and the next thing you know, people get nasty, and your business is terrible, and you're terrible, and all that kind of stuff. So that comes with the territory. Don't give people a lot of stuff to tie on to. Yeah, I'm known to be loud and noisy, and I don't always use the best terminology in the school board, me, whatever, but you depend on me for the truth, and yeah, I guess I do talk too much. Let's talk about the topic at hand, and that is what I'm calling munchausen politics. Okay, if you talk to statisticians or people that are strategists for election politics, when you get outside of like a local, small, rural school district and the politics become more mature and a little bit more nuanced, let's say that, and you were to say to somebody, if I'm going to campaign for an office, when should I start campaigning? And they will tell you, start campaigning the day after someone is seated in the current election. So if it's two years or four years, you start right now. And sometimes statisticians and advisors and analysts will look at things, and they'll kind of pick out weaknesses and develop a strategy that goes and puts you where you need to be, and it's not really organic that much, and it kind of looks for opportunities, but if you're going that route, the stuff has to be timed perfectly. Now, I talked about platforms. I talked about what my platform was, again, what makes a good school board member. Check that out. But some people develop their own platform based on the appearance that something is wrong, and so here's, for example, a great example. Nancy Pelosi, like her or not, or like her or not, there's a video out there of her explaining what's called a wrap-up smear. I'll give you a link to it right up there. But basically, what you do is you time things carefully, and you will say, oh, for example, Ken Fallsgraph does this, he doesn't do this, this is broken, okay, and it's his fault. Now, it's not really broken. Sometimes people knowingly pick things that you can't talk about, like closed session things, or policies that are being developed, or collective bargaining. We'll talk about that one in a minute. I'm going to give you a couple of examples of this, but you'll put the information out there, and then the press picks up on it. That can be by design. You might even have somebody in the press acting as a constituent or a parent and speak at the podium and make comments that they later on report out on themselves, so self-fulfilling prophecy, but they basically, people use this tactic to say, okay, this is messed up, and they get the press to buy it. So you're talking to people in the cafe, and then they read it in the newspaper, which automatically makes it real, and if you time this stuff properly, you set up a change platform based on nothing than your own imaginations. So you hurt the baby, you fix the baby, and you're the hero, i.e. munchausen politics. So let me give you a couple of examples of this. You're more likely to see this, again, as you get closer to the election, people forget that a lot of people mail in their ballots, so it gets more and more desperate, and it's harder to pull this at the last minute. You've had to set this up two years, a year ahead of time, and you can see these patterns, and if somebody can identify it, and you slander somebody, this book right here, Tortlaw, describes something called malicious misrepresentation. Yeah, check that one out. But anyway, a couple of examples. These will work for just about any school district right now. So let's say when kids were starting to come back to school, I take up the position, this school board does not support the transportation of students and bus drivers. Okay, let's look at the reality of that in 2022. Do you remember COVID? Do you remember nobody was going to school? That means school buses were parked. That means school bus drivers were not driving school buses. Let's talk about a school bus driver, what that job looks like. You get up really early in the morning, you go pick kids up, you take them in, sometimes your kids aren't the best on the bus, you're dealing with all that, you drop the kids off, and then you're off. You don't get paid for that time. And then at the end of the day, you're back on doing the same thing, kids all wound up. Yeah, not the best job in the world. I appreciate the people that do it, but you've got people who are getting up in the morning, split schedule, working in the afternoon. Now, not everybody drives a school bus. It takes a certification to drive a school bus. You don't just take a regular driver's license. Now, going back into my time in the oil fields, there were times where I had an unlimited Class A license, which means I could drive a crane down the road, the biggest cranes. I could drive these winch trucks that were the size of these giant tow trucks you see, concrete truck, anything. That license was very valuable, but it required that I kept a clean driving record, so anything like impaired driving, reckless driving, display of speed, running stop signs. The insurance company for the rigging company I worked for would see that stuff and say, we're not going to insure this people. So your ability to hold that license was based a lot on how you conducted yourself on the road, whether you're behind the wheel commercially or driving your car at home. So a credentialed bus driver holding that certification with a good driving record is something that's desirable, not just for a bus, but for other applications. So if you're going to leave somebody sit at home for two years, don't be surprised if somebody else wants to hire them, because that certification, they have that special license. So all of a sudden, everybody comes back to school, somebody has moved on, found a full-time job, or they're not getting up real early, or staying late and getting paid for the full time. Don't expect there to be anything but a crisis in bus drivers. So when someone is standing there going, you have to do something about the bus driver shortage. You want me to do that in Acton? You want me to do it nationally? You want me to do it in the next state over, because everybody's experiencing this. This isn't an excuse, so I'll respond and say, have you tried to age any recruitments on bus drivers? Meaning, is this a way for you to take a funded position, not fill it, drag your feet a little bit and save some funding? No, I'll ask these questions in open session. Next thing, while we're talking about transportation is buses. Okay, again, buses are shut down. Buses are sitting there, not running every day. There's old buses. Nobody buys brand-new buses every day. So all of a sudden, everybody comes back to work. Buses are sitting there idle. Anything that sits idle is mechanical. It's not good for it to sit. It needs to run. Anyway, budgets come back, the government releases money for safety, for transportation, for school lunch programs, things like that, stimulus things to get us going again. So say the finance director orders some buses. Well, you'll see that on the agenda. There's a contract to buy buses under a purchase agreement with piggyback from this company, blah, blah, blah. So you see that on the agenda, you look at it. You know the bus is ordered. They don't have a bus sitting there for you. You order the bus. So there are supply chain issues. Have you heard about that? I have three types of I have three types of one brand of car. It's getting to the point where anything beyond an oil chain, if something needs parts, I take it in there. What used to take a couple hours now takes three and four days because you can't get parts. So I don't buy cars to leave them sit there for three or four days, but it's part of the supply chain issue that we hear about everything right now. So the chassis for the bus is done, the motor's on, everything's going to whoever is putting the bus body on the bus. Now, I have a family member, an uncle in northern Wisconsin, that basically runs the busing part for a school district there. So I know a little bit about that by talking, "Hey, Uncle Bill." Anyway, so if I'm looking at this, I can say, "Hey, I know the buses are ordered. Nobody's watching this from the public. I know there's a supply chain issue." And so what I'm going to do is I'm saying, "Our buses are old. The school board isn't doing anything about old buses." And knowing that about the time I say that and get seated, here comes a new bus that was ordered nine months ago. Great. So I'm basically painting out a problem that is not the fault of the superintendent or the school board. I'm blowing it up. I'm getting people to believe it, and then I'm a hero that fixes it when I've actually had nothing to do with it. Another issue. Let's talk about staff compensation. So I'm going to be pro teacher. The teachers are underpaid. I'm going to get this. Well, the teachers aren't supposed to sit in their classroom and go, "This guy's promised to me more money." So every parent that comes in, "I'm going to campaign for this person." Do you really think that's going to happen? So anyway, here's what I will tell you about staff salaries and benefit packages. Outside of Wisconsin, and there's been, I don't know if there's been another state that's thrown away the collective bargaining process, but public agencies, the employees have their associations or unions, and they engage in collective bargaining, which means I, as the union board, appoint a group of people to represent us in negotiations. The school district has a team like that. At the beginning of the school year, they sunshine issues that they want to negotiate for the year. It might be the whole contract. It might be number of students in the room. It might be salary and benefits. But anyway, they sunshine those to the public. So on the school board meeting, they'll tell you, "Hey, we're going to talk about this. The school district wants to talk about that." Once that happens, the negotiations occur between the group of the certificated or classified those people and the school district representative. Sometimes there's attorneys sitting there and, you know. So it goes along. At some point, things move to the point where people will come to the school board in closed session and say, "Hey, we're kind of here. We need some direction. The finance department says we kind of got this much to work with. We want to offer this. They're wanting this. How much leverage or leeway do we have to move ahead with the process?" Now, if you're a school board member and you're sitting in the back room in closed session and you're hearing this and you want to be popular with the unions, you might go out there and say, "Hey, when I was in closed session, they're really thinking to do this." But I think that is a terrible thing to do. It's actually illegal. Don't engage in that. Your popularity with people isn't worth you being led away in handcuffs. Anyway, this is all a oiled machine. Now, if I'm on the school board, I can't sit up there and say, "Hey, you teachers are asking for this, you're wanting this," or whatever. That's not bargaining in good faith. Likewise, if people that represent these associations are coming up there and telling me, "Hey, you, board member Falls' graph or whatever your name is, you're hanging on to money, you're stingy with deserves, you don't care about," and all this is going on in the background, that's not cool. And I'm not going to attack you in public, but you know what you're doing. Every public employee knows this. At the end of the day, here's what happens. Collective bargaining results in an agreement. The county office of education and state law in California that protects taxpayer rights is now looking forward going, "Okay, if you agree to this and you set the step increases for different levels of employees, the ultimate outcome is going to be this. There's going to be this burden on the district financially now and later." And they look at all that and calculate that you're not putting yourself in the hole. So if I just want to run on the board for four years and be popular, and I want to hand out a huge raise, it's going to be spotted down the road as not maintainable in a long-term thing. So this idea that somebody's going to come in and bash board members and say, "You're not taking care of the teachers." Yeah, you want to be careful of that. Our ability as board members to influence what's going on with a teacher or a group of people doesn't exist. And if you find yourself advocating for different little people that you know and that you're friends with, that's going to work out poorly for you. Finally, I want to talk about controversial votes. So let's say that I've got a school that's, I have some overcrowding. There's reasons why schools are overcrowded. First one might be that a school over here shut down because the student enrollment was sinking to the point where, again, schools are funded by average number of students in a seat. There's a certain number. You might get some grants every once in a while from the feds or the state, but you maintain X number of kids. It costs X amount to run a school. When the school is not keeping itself afloat financially, then the cost overruns from that school affect other schools. So sometimes the difficult decisions are made. We need to shut that school down. We put the kids in other schools, and the numbers go up. That's unfortunate if that happens. But in the event that your enrollment is going up, funny story, I was accused by someone, "You have caused enrollment decreases," me personally. And it wasn't 15 minutes later, and some staff member announced that our enrollment in the district had gone up 10% in the last week at the start of school. So yeah, know your numbers. If you're going to smear me ahead of time, get some better lessons from Nancy Pelosi up there, and just time it a little bit better so you can be the hero at the end. But anyway, so if you're making claims like that and accusing people of doing stuff like that, but back to controversial vote. Let's say that you've got an empty school that's been sitting around for a while. It's not DSA-approved, so the state architect has to make sure that things are approved for schools. If you don't get those works done and approved and have a project, then the state doesn't approve. You can't legally put kids in the classroom. Some people find that that system is overbearing and restrictive. Other people live with it and do whatever they do. But let's say, for example, we've got population increases and enrollment increases to a point where our rooms are burst, and it seems that we want to look at, we need to fix up that school over there, that old school. We don't have the reserves to do it, and so we need to have a bond. So everybody looks at this and agrees. Bonds are not popular with people, especially if there's lax oversight, if people don't understand what it's about, if people are on incomes that don't provide them the means to buy their medicine, pay for their property tax, and do all that kind of thing. Those people are entitled to the right to vote no. And so let's say that you realize, two or three years down the road, if we keep on this, we're going to have so many kids in the classrooms, we can't do this. So we're triggered to do something. Everybody knows that. And then when it comes time to vote on putting a bond out, three people vote yes, and two people or one person votes no, because it's election year and they figure, "Okay, I'll be popular in the community as the one that stood up against the bond machine," or whatever. That's one example. Another example is you start having difficult issues about making policy changes, curriculum, things that might not be that controversial in a big city, but in a rural population, you see some of those curriculums coming through. People are like, "Oh, state is telling you, you have to do it," all these things. You might have a situation where you're negotiating something. You might have an unfortunate discipline-related or closed session thing. And because nobody will know what's going on back there, I can come out knowing that the decision might not be popular or understood by the community, and I've got three people who are going to vote, and I vote against that for sole reason, making myself look like I'm the savior of something. And yeah, so Munchausen politics at the end is basically timing things to where you create the illusion that there's a big problem. You get somebody to peddle that message for you, and then if your time is just right, things work themselves out, and about the time you get sat on the board, there he or she is, single-handedly fixed everything. So good luck with that. Watch that when you are going to the ballot box. Again, just to ask people, my recommendation to you is ask people what you have to offer the service to the community, how you fit into the board, if your ideas are going to have consensus, and how will we measure you the next time it's ready to vote for you? So I hope you appreciate these things. Again, if you're watching this 10 years from now, I'm sure none of this backdoor politics will have changed. I want to end this episode by telling you a little story about this guitar I have behind me on the bench. So when you file as a candidate, you go down and you let the county registrar know, "I'm pulling my papers." So they'll email them to you. You can pick up a packet or whatever. You look it over and decide, "Is this what I want to do? Yes or no?" So the day you actually go in or have a notary help you fill out your stuff, a mail-in, trust me, the registrar would rather have you there than have to call you and figure out what you're doing if you've never filed before. But anyway, so I left Acton, California, non-stop action Acton, early one morning in July, and drove to Norwalt, California Cultural Capital World, and went to the registrar's office and had my papers filled out and filed. Now, that same day, by the time I got there, it was midday. I'd taken the day off. And in my shop here, I will pick up old guitars that are pretty much junky. They're the kinds of guitars that you would see in the mail-order catalogs in the 40s, 50s, and 60s. They weren't that great to begin with. I do things with them. I also build guitars out of junk. So that day, I figure, "Okay, I'll run down." I made contact with somebody, had a couple guitars in French Valley, California, a couple hours away from the registrar. So I go there. I bought two guitars that day. One of them will show up in one of my Guitar Channel episodes. And then this person tells me, "Well, I've got this other guitar you may be interested in." And it was this guitar. So I'm going to ask you this. Given all this delusion and fixing and these tricky politics people play, what is the one thing that you don't want to be associated with in your campaign lately, especially if you're on a national level politics? And what does that have to do with this guitar? Well, I couldn't believe it, but the same day I filed, this person is showing me a guitar that was made in the Soviet Union, actually in Ukraine. Do you see that up there? CCCP. Now, this is a clunky guitar. It's made out of wood that's hobbled together. I guess it sounds okay. If I could play it, that would be a different story. But I thought it was amusing that one day of the year that I filed for candidacy, I get pinned to something in Russia and Ukraine. So hey, if I haven't been rowdy enough, if I haven't talked loud enough, if I haven't told you the truth too much, or if I've sworn or said odd things in the school board meeting and you can't get me that way, please tie me to that I'm somehow colluding with the Russians to play you campaign songs that are going to convince you to vote for me in a collusionary way. By the way, I don't know if I told you this, but there weren't enough candidates to hold the election. This campaign video isn't really a campaign video. I hope you enjoyed it, and I hope that as somebody's considering a school board candidacy, you kind of look at why you're doing it. If you're on a school board, I appreciate your service to the kids in your district, and I think you know exactly what I'm talking about. And again, if you're watching this 10 years from now, yeah, guess what? The stuff I'm talking about is real. Hopefully, you can move past that. Get some good governance training for your board. Understand finances. Understand your role. Get the right superintendent, the right team that's ready to support the teachers and the staff in giving kids hope for the future, because that's what education is about. It's about more education and creating competent adults coming out of your school that are ready for careers, blending into society productively and/or getting higher education. That said, if you liked this video, give me a like if you didn't do this. And if you're really bored, subscribe so I can talk to you about my next adventure. See you soon.